Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are present. We will begin with an opening ceremony. Councilmember Steve Vincent will conduct that.
Thank you, Mayor. I had invited somebody from one of the local churches to come, and I don't see them here. So we'll go ahead and stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, we do have a scout troop here, and as our tradition, why, I think it's just one. One of the young men will come up and introduce your troop. By introduce, we mean your troop number, why you're here, and the schools you attend. That's all. Yeah, come up here to the microphone, and you can pull it down so we can hear you.
We're Scout Troop 4876, and... And we're here to see the mayor and have a tour of the city hall. We, most of us go to the chair of Wright Elementary School.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. It's good to have you here, and welcome. I think that was everyone. Okay. Next, we go to the minutes of June 20th. Motion on the minutes.
Mayor, move for approval of the June 20 minutes.
Second. Property before us. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous. The minutes are approved. Next, we go to our awards tonight. We have several of those. We'll begin with, I believe, the Charles A. Kane Award for Workplace Safety. It's being presented to West Valley City, and I guess some of you are ready to do that. I don't know who...
Sir, I don't know, or I haven't met the gentleman, but I understand it's Mr. Douglas Love.
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor Bigelow and City Council persons. My name is Doug Love, and I'm a safety consultant for Workers' Compensation Fund, or WCF Insurance, who has been the work comp insurance carrier for the city for the past four years. In 1917, the state insurance fund was created with a loan from the state for $40,000, and the governor appointed a gentleman by the name of Charles A. Kane to manage that new state department. And to honor this gentleman, and to honor those that we feel excel in workplace safety efforts, we have created this Charles A. Kane Workplace Safety Award, and award that to certain policyholders every year. This year, we awarded it to 21 of our policyholders out of over 20,000 policyholders. So it's a unique and select group of public entities and firms and businesses that achieve this award. It is achieved by certain measurables that we like to look at as being the work comp provider. Certainly, we look at the city's safety programs and their past injury history with regard to workplace claims. We look at experience rating, which is also a good indicator of your history, policies and procedures and things like that that we feel that will help prevent workplace injuries. And then some of the probably unmeasurables that I think are probably more important than the measurables, and now I feel is the attitude and the culture that we feel that the city has here, from elected officials like yourselves on down to city administration, and department heads, and individual employees of West Valley City. I've been in this business long enough to know that when you excel in this workplace safety arena, it is a team effort, from the head person on down. So I would like to express my thanks. Been able to work with individuals in the city here, from the safety council to risk management, and personally, it's been a breath of fresh air to be able to work with these individuals and see their dedication and continuous effort to want to improve workplace safety. So I would like to award this 2017 Charles A. Kane Workplace Safety Award to Mayor Bigelow, Councilmember Don Christensen, Lars Nordfeldt, Tom Nguyen, Steve Buehler, Karen Lang, and Steve Vincent. And appreciate being able to be business partners with the city of West Valley, and hopefully that continues for years to come. So thank you.
On behalf of the city? Thank you so much. Now, I believe that, of course, there are certain city employees who have a significant impact on this. I was told that, let's see, HR and the Risk Section of our legal department. Are there any of them here? Oh, stand up.
Rachel Sten.
And so, respectively, thank you. We appreciate your great work there. And of course, Mr. Powell, all of your staff, and all who contributed to that. Thank you for bringing that. We'll proudly display that in one of our display areas. I'm not quite sure where. Okay, so maybe we'll send that down to Mr. Powell. Okay. Next, the administering the oath of office to our new parks and, well, relatively new, Parks and Recreation Director, and so that's under the direction of Nicole. You're going to administer that. Anything else we need to do? Okay.
Hey, raise your hand. Let me have a look.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Just want to recognize, I think that Nancy has some family here, and at least I recognize at least one I've met. Would you just stand? Those are any family members? Oh, okay. Thank you for coming and supporting her. We know it has a lot of impact on your family, and we just appreciate her a great deal. So thank you.
There's some staff members of hers there in the audience, too.
Oh, yeah. Where are they? Let's see.
I don't remember if they're here.
Yeah, they're half the rest. Okay. Come to celebrate swearing in of your new boss. Swearing in, the swearing app comes later. Okay. Rip that in. Next, we have a proclamation declaring July 1st through July 7th as Independence Day. Week for West Valley. Yeah, that's right. Councilman Buehler, do you have that?
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation declaring July 1st through July 7th, 2017, as Independence Week in West Valley City. That's Independence-D-E-M-T-S. Whereas Independence Week provides a time to celebrate the independence of the members of the community of West Valley City and the entrepreneurial spirit represented by our core of local independent businesses. And whereas the individual decisions every community member makes today affect the future of West Valley City, and whereas West Valley City's local independent businesses help preserve the uniqueness of the community and give us a sense of place, and whereas West Valley City's core of independently owned businesses give back to this community in goods, services, time, and talent, and whereas the health of West Valley City's economy depends on our support of businesses owned by our friends and neighbors, and whereas West Valley City's independent business owners and employees enrich community members' shopping experiences with their knowledge and passion, and whereas we celebrate Independence Week 2017, we acknowledge that the ability to choose the direction of West Valley City lies within each of us. Now therefore, we, the mayor and City Council of West Valley City, Utah, hereby proclaim the week of July 1st through July 7th, 2017, as Independence Week and salute our community members and locally owned independent businesses which are integral to the unique flavor of West Valley City and honor their efforts to make West Valley City the place we want to live and work.
Thank you. With that, then, we move into our public comment period. We have several people who have signed up. A reminder that it is not a debate time or question and answer, but certainly can ask questions. We'll see about answering them later. Five minutes each, and we have several people signed up. First of all, we begin with Kelly, and it's Bertosch, right? Okay, I'll do that right after this one. But before you start, just so everyone knows, if you're here to speak on the public hearing, that will be separate. The public hearing on, but we got one on the budget. We have one on rezoning. And so if you're here to speak on those two items, we'll have a public hearing where people can speak on that separately. This one is the catch-all for anything else. So Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you for your time, as mayor, City Council. I'm shocked to be up here again. Last time I was here in December, I kind of went out of here a little bit hot-headed, don't understand how the yeas and yae speak. But when we last time met, you guys all voted for us against subdivision being subdivided on 6,000 West and approximately 37 and 80 something South. And then I submitted names of people. There was at least a dozen names here, people that we do not want this. And then lo and behold, Gail War caught me the other day laughing and saying, "My good friend Kathy Lang got it approved for me." So again, slam for you, whatever. But I don't know why we have to keep coming here month after month to go against this thing. Again, I got a list of names of several of us that didn't even get a letter of invite to your last meeting, which if Gail's saying that's what she got, no approval on the last one for her, then we need to get together again and vote this again. Because this is not right, folks. This is my community. That's my backyard. I don't want somebody looking right down at me every day for the rest of my life. I was born and raised right in that area, and I don't want any more split subdivisions that you guys are allowing these people to pop up. This is wrong. This is not right. This is an area that's already set up with the housing on it. The people on Zionist Circle do not want this, nor do some of the people across the street on 6,000 West. I walked door to door to a few of the homes. The people were there. And there was only two of them that said that they got notification. So two out of several against, I mean, something's wrong. I don't know what we need to do to recreate this, but we do not want this. It's up to you guys, and I don't know why. Again, if we submitted names with all this that was already approved, and only one person comes here and all of a sudden it's approved, why is those names not recognized from previous meeting in December? That's our words, our speaking. We do not want it. Along with each one of you who said it wasn't going to happen, and then all of a sudden, it happens. This is why I get upset at things like this. I don't understand the politics crap of it or political side of it. I'm a common sense straight shooter. And again, from my neighborhood, from me, we do not want this subdivision put in there. And I hope that you guys will recognize, and if you want to copy these names again, of the people that didn't get letters, this needs to be addressed again. But I don't understand why it's already been voted down one time. Why does it have to keep going, and why do we have to keep getting these meetings? You guys are the ones that stand up here and all said no, and then 100% I guess got approved because we wasn't represented, but we was by the names that were already addressed to it. So I hope that you will really look at this, our side of it. I didn't bombard you here with everybody here, and everybody wanted to come if they want to. They said, "We'll come and battle." We don't want to battle. We want to be able to do this diplomatically, nicely, and I promised I'd keep my voice down and not yell on screen and say names, but folks, I please hope that you guys will understand. We don't want this. Whatever the Latham is, and she addressed me by slapping me in the face by saying, "And we're going to do a duplex," which I found out that was not meeting with the mayor yesterday. So I don't know what she's trying to pull, and I don't know what this Jerry Davis, which is her brother-in-law. These two are stepchildren of Ron Latham. Their own family members have been left out. Other than one son that passed away, who was a county sheriff. He's the only man that took care of their dad. I took care of this guy for the last dozen years. I took care of his yard. I took care of him. And I watched him pass away in that home because they got neglect of not checking on this man for three days. He laid in a bathtub, and they refused to allow me call 911. I kept him alive one more night when I was allowed to. And then we called 911. By then, the damage was too late. So shame on there for allowing that to happen. But I hope that you guys do not allow these people to come in here and build this house in my neighborhood. They don't live near it. Jerry lives in Seattle. I don't want their property. I really don't. But we don't want it to look like a big mess as it is now. And I hope that your ordinance will at least address it because the ways are as tall as I am. Because once they had me leave, I quit taking care of it. So there's two things that need to be done here. Ordinance needs to be addressed to them, and we don't want this. And I hope you look at this and say no again, or I'll have 200 people here be after you. Because we don't want it, and I hope that you guys realize that. This is my back door, and I don't want it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have David Waldron. Waldron? You can correct me. It's okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm the applicant for the subdivision for the zoning rechange. So I'll speak at that time.
Okay, thank you. And I have to say it right because sometimes I want to say Mark Micum, but it's really Mike Markum, if you'll come forward.
Okay, Mike Markum. She's got my address. I just want to speak to the immigration policy that there's been a lot of talk on. I kind of agree with everybody here that we have a policy in place. And as far as how it should be published, I think it should be published in English. This is the U.S. You know, if you want to be part of our organization or our country, learn the language so you know what's going on. That's the spoken language here. When I go to Mexico, when I was in Vietnam, I didn't expect people to cater to me. I did my best. So I think it should be published in English. And I was disheartened the night I was here. I wish we had a much bigger crowd as we had the last time I was here, when I spoke and just asked that we could enforce the codes to maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods, to keep them nice and to keep things going forward. And after I made my plea for nice neighborhoods and so forth, as I went to sit down, I was booed. One person cheered me on. I was booed by the people that want to be treated special. I'm sorry. If, you know, they want to be treated special, they don't want to participate in the neighborhood maintenance and taking care of things. I'm sorry. I guess I'm turning into one of those people that the previous city manager that was cheating on his wife told me I was a bigot. You know, maybe I'm a bigot, but you know, I just want nice things for the city, and I want everything, everybody to work together. No special treatment for anybody. You know, you come here, you know the language. We publish everything in English. You know, only the English people will read it. That's not our problem. Publish it in English. This is the U.S. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all. We're signed up. Anyone else here to take their, a couple of minutes? Seeing none, then we'll go to the next item on our agenda. Any comments from our city manager?
No, sir, thanks.
Through the council, any comments?
Should we mention that the zoning is coming up next week or in two weeks for our public comment period? Because I think that's the one, isn't that the one that's coming up in two weeks? Or is it the one for tonight?
It's not tonight.
It's not tonight, so it's in two weeks we'll have that subdivision planned up for, and it's, I think it's all in the public comment at that time.
But I think that we already did the rezoning.
Yeah.
And so we're doing the development, which is a little different. Question was raised, and so that you're aware, and I mentioned it in the previous meeting, but we did check to see if notices had been sent out to all adjacent property owners. Mr. Powell, and maybe you could just reiterate what you already told me about those having been mailed.
Yes, sir. For whatever names that we were presented with, we did check the list, and they were sent. If there are others, we'd be glad to check those as well.
Maybe we could get a list of those. You can just give that to them if you can after, or quietly slip up there. We'll go on with the rest of our meeting and taking care of it.
I just looked. It does not have a public comment period next to it.
Yeah, I was going to add that comment, sorry. Is it, it's a final plot approval, but there is still public comment. It's just not a public hearing item for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, seeing no further comments, then we will go to the public hearing scheduled for tonight, number 8 on our agenda, regarding the reopening of our fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. And you wonder why we're doing that so late in the game, if you will, but we understand that this had to do with the proceeds of a bond. And if we don't make the adjustment, that's the only change. It could possibly end up, likely to end up, as an item on our audit for not having properly recorded that. And so the only purpose in this budget opening for our current budget year, which ends June 30th, is to make sure that our books are complete and up to date. With that introduction, then, we will open it for a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? No one here to speak this. That's not surprising. That's more of a technical correction. But anyway, seeing no one, we'll close that public hearing portion. We'll bring it back to the council to consider Ordinance 1724 to amend our budget. Mayor, move for approval of Ordinance 1724. Property before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none. To our city recorder for the roll call.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeldt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Application Z-7-2017 filed by David Waldron, a zoning change from agriculture to minimum lot half acres to agriculture 2, where the minimum lot size is all to end at 2 acres, to residential estate. This is switching from agriculture to our new zoning residential estate for property at 3264 West, 3100 South. And should have got that opened up and ready so that... We studied these the week before, and sometimes I forget the details of it. 3.25 acres, 2.6 acres, and... Anything there? I'm just looking to see if I need to mention this is... But just a zoning change. So with that, is there anything else I need to mention there that I've forgotten?
There's the zoning and the development agreement.
Oh, excuse me, yes.
It's a slight modification on some of the standards so that the property could be subdivided.
That's right. Thank you for reminding that. That was on the next page. I got to flip my page over. So thank you. And those particular changes, do you remember what those were? Councilman Buehler sent your...
I think it was on the, from 100 to 90 feet on the lot size frontage, I think it was, so that they could, they just wanted to put the street over the circle at the end, and that's the only way they could bring those lots into that property. And they still have the minimum size, and still could be built to our standards and everything else.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Now it got up in front of me. So anyway, any further comments or introductions? Not, we will declare open the public hearing portion. Is there anyone here to speak? That, at least it seems to be one, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honored counsel. My name is David Waldron. I work with Forestrand Associates. We've been hired to do the subdivision and represent the owner. Our office is at 370 East, 500 South in Salt Lake City. Like to first say thanks to the city staff for their help and assistance in doing this thing to this point. The property right now currently has one home on it that fronts onto 3100, and that home would continue to front onto 3100. The other proposed six lots would go on to an extension of Sunrise Point Drive. We have worked through the logistics of making that fit through there. And you know, as mentioned, the one modification to go to a 90-foot frontage was mentioned on there. The minimum lot size, the smallest one is like just shy of 13,000, but the average is over 16, which meets the requirements for 15,000 square foot lots. We anticipate that, you know, assuming everything goes well and everything is approved, that we would have six new homes in that area, you know, coming up within the next year or less. We're excited about this small subdivision. It is an infill, small area, only 3 and 1/4 acres. But we felt it will be an asset to the city. Right now, it is zoned agriculture, but it's been more of a ugly tree farm, is what I want to refer to it as. And I hope the late Mr. Brendel doesn't roll over his grave on that comment. But you know, it needs to be cleaned up, and doing the subdivision would go a long ways to cleaning up that mess. With that, I'm here to answer any questions from the council. With that, I'm here to answer any questions from the counselor.
Just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, what kind of trees are on there? Are they Russian olive and elm trees?
Mostly, and a mixture.
Are there any worth saving? I mean, I'm just looking at the trees between the church and the asphalt in those homes.
Maybe, but when I walked through there, it was like, take an awful lot of trimming, I'm afraid that by the time we trim anything that wasn't a Russian olive or an elm, it wouldn't be worth it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
But thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this issue? Seeing no one else, then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council to deal with the zoning change and the development agreement.
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 17-25.
Happy to see people taking advantage of the residential estate zone, I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on that? Comments? Then to our city recorder for the roll call.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And next we have resolution 17-98, the development agreement, to the council.
Move for approval of resolution 17-98.
Okay, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next we have resolution 17-72, and this particular development agreement is with Premier Land Development, 5.6 acres at approximately 3879 South, 4,000 West. This was zoned R18, and so they're working through that to make everything work. Seems like there were some adjustments on this one, and... So, we are, this, the purpose of this, will authorize the city to enter into a development agreement to work out all those details and how it will be plotted and everything else. And we've had some discussion on how that's laid out, and we've seen different variations of that, and so, let's see, and if I remember, let's see, the proposal was, because this would not meet our current housing standards of 2,000 square feet for a randler, 3,000 for a two-story, those would be reduced to 1,700 and 2,500 in return on 10, 8 of the lots, I think we said 10, but we're down to, how many was it?
I actually don't remember the number, Mayor, but what I was gonna suggest was, is we did have some earlier discussion in the study meeting in which some of those adjustments were illustrated, and because of the length of time that's passed since then to now, I don't know about the rest of the council, but we talked about a lot of things, details were sort of fuzzy, I would suggest that we have Mr. Pastor come up and sort of reiterate what those were, that way you're all operating from a same page. Thank you very much, Don, as you're going forward. Yes, ma'am.
I thought in this study session, we decided to continue this, to allow staff to compose the proper document, show it to us next day's session, and then we'd vote on it.
Correct, that was the recommendation, I just thought it might be helpful for him to come up and reiterate that for the public meeting, but not necessary.
Right, then instead of amending this on the plot, because the language doesn't include the changes that even the developer is amenable to adding in hopes of passage that could possibly be covered on a later day.
Correct. So, to the ultimate end of where we ended with this evening, that's exactly correct, that's what we're recommending we'd like to do, but if the council would like to hear the details of that illustrated...
So, Mayor, would a motion be in order at this point, or?
Certainly. I just felt, because it's on our agenda, I always try and introduce it anyway, because I don't know what the exact action of the council will be, although that was discussed, until the council takes action. And there were offsetting requirements, and so that those who are listening know, in some situations, we do make agreements that modifications can be made to standards, but it always carries with it, something else has to be done instead. And that's, this is one of those proposed cases. But given that there were some changes, then now it is certainly time for a motion.
Mayor, I'd move that we continue resolution 17-72 to a future unspecified date.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, then we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion for continuance is approved.
Okay, next we have resolution 17-99, to order contract to granite construction for the 2017 asphalt overlay project. This is something that we do every year, and I was just going to remind myself of the budget on that. $3,665,000 comes from our Class C road fund and our CFP fund, and in our detail, we have identified a number of streets that are going to be dealt with on that, and so, we'll receive that work with that introduction, this'll occur here in the future, to the council. Move for approval of resolution 17-99.
Second.
Second. Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next we have our consent agenda, and these are resolutions 17-100 through 17-111, 11 of them, these are, excuse me, 112, thank you. And these are all ratifications of the city manager's appointments to Professional Standards Review Board, Planning Commission, Board of Adjustments, Clean and Beautiful Committee, City License Hearing Board, and the Audit Review Committee. And I don't think I need to go through all the names, I guess they're there, if anyone wants to look at those in detail, but to ratify these 10 individuals, or should I? Do we traditionally do put the names in the record? Don't we? Okay. Maybe that's just me.
Maybe we should have, I mean, every time you give us a state John Bier on the best plan.
And so, the first...
Yeah, two council members, Larsen and Feld, to the Audit Committee, and you to the Clean and Beautiful, and so, those come before us to be reviewed and approved to the council then. Mayor, move for approval of the items on the consent agenda. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That completes our regularly scheduled agenda, any final comments from the council? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or if you say no. If it passes unanimously, we are adjourned.